I'm being recorded. So saya agak pemalu, huh? So if I don't come out online like Roger Moore or something, my humblest apologies. Praise God. It's good to be in Pastor Carlos Church. As he said, I've known him for a few years now. He used to come down and, uh, and he can teach, he can preach, and you know, but he's got an amazing touch, huh? With worship. Honestly, you know, I mean, whenever he used to come, right? To, to that place, huh? He's a good teacher of the word, he knows the word. But if you ask me, uh, Kaleb Han, huh? He's, I mean, he's a tremendous worship leader, you know? I mean, for me, whenever I come, those days when, when Pastor Samuel's time, I, I just look forward to listening to him and, and Sister Glenn worship, they have something. May not be a five-piece band or may not be an orchestra, but really, I think worship comes from the heart, amen? Yeah, so I'm sure you will agree with me. Okay, I, I have in my heart today to share with you some things on, on healing. Is it possible to blow the, the thing up? And Malu, will I see myself on TV like? No, can, can you? If you can, it's okay. Okay, it's all right, no problem. Yeah, okay, I, I wanna share some thoughts on about healing. Uh, because these last few months, last few months, my ministry has been really hospital, visiting the sick in hospital ministry, a lot of people I know, macam-macam punya penyakit. You know, here, young people, pastor, young people, twenty-eight, twenty-nine years old, struck with immune disorders. I mean, those days, this is orang tua punya sakit, now thirty years old, twenty-eight years old, Alzheimer's, Parkinson's, this kind of, this kind of, of immune disorders. You know, uh, there are a lot. Maybe, maybe Kuala Lumpur line, I don't know, maybe the air there is different, I don't know. But I'm seeing a lot of things, and then I look at our churches, right? And, uh, the church I belong to now, and, and I'm sure Pastor, uh, Carlos Etnos also. We are a charismatic church, at least we move in the gifts. We are led by the Spirit, Pentecostal Charismatic Churches. And what is so important in these churches is their teaching about divine healing. Amen. We have something in the Word of God. We have a teaching about Him, even, I dare say, I dare say, that, that this doctrine of divine healing, or the teaching of divine healing, is almost a foundational teaching in the Charismatic Pentecostal Churches today. It is so important. But, but we don't seem to be moving any, it's so important for us to get this right, because we have a choice. We are empowered to heal in the same way Jesus Christ healed. It's not passed away, you know? And, and I, when we see this kind of things happening, you know, instead of wringing our hands in despair and saying, "Oh, what, what am I to do?" There are things that we can do if we understand this entire teaching about divine healing. Today, I'm not going to teach everything or show you everything about divine healing. I'm just going to talk a little bit that, that strikes my mind that I want to share today, and then we will pray for you. We will pray for you. Unfortunately, we cannot believe for you. Believing is kamu punya kerja. You follow what I'm saying? It's something that you do, but what we can do is hopefully give you the Word of God, because it's only the Word of God that can convict you. No matter how charming we are, how good-looking, how all these are, they're one of no effect, cannot, I mean, it may, it may win your heart, but it's not going to affect your spirit. Am I right? Do you, you, you understand what I'm saying? So what, that's what I'm going to be doing today, I'm going to share with you some scriptures. Please don't get angry with me, please don't get offended with me. You know, if I say something that kind of hurts your, your belief or, or whatever it is, just go back and look at the verses and then, and then let God speak to you. If you really got a problem, then you can come down here, I will buy you a good lunch. Okay? Okay, now, I wanna share with you something. You see, uh, what I propose to do today is I'm going to look at these following things, I'm, I'm going to follow this. So if you're taking notes of you, you want to follow me, sometimes I speak too fast, so let me just put up what I want to be sharing tonight. These are those topics that I've been looking at very quickly. I want to be talking about God's perfect will for mankind. What is God's will for mankind? Because too many a time, I hear, "Oh, God sent Him the disease to humble Him." Or "God sent Him that, uh, because He's a bad man." I mean, not the Batman, the superhero Batman, you know what I mean? Orang jahat lah. So what is God's will for mankind? And if a believer happens to be ill, if he happens to be sick, then what's God's will for that person? You know, I'm, I'm sad to say, I learned a very bitter lesson very early in my ministry. I'm sorry, huh? But those days, you know, because I used to work nine to five, and so most of my ministry is after office lah, so the pastor don't want to go, he'll send me, "Uh, can you go to GH, can you go to UH, can you go here?" Or hopeless cases, they'll send me, you know? So no choice, okay, never went and go. And so I used to, to, to pray like that, nah, I'm, I'm sad to say. If it's a young person, huh, any, any problem, I'll say, "God, oh, raise Him up, Father, in Jesus' name, heal Him, melt Him, mold Him, cause Him to stand up." But if I go, huh, the person is already, I'm sorry, huh, I apologize, huh? If the person is an elderly person, already got grandchildren, you know, had a happy life, I find myself, "God, let Your will be done," because my mind is saying, "Ayah sudah cukup umur lah." Honestly. Until one day, huh, one day, my friend asked me to go and, and minister, and this is, this is peculiar for me, God convicted me. Send me to pray for this mother, okay? His mother in SGM C, okay? Subang Jaya Medical Center, that's very expensive hospital, okay? You walk inside one step, also you cannot buy, yeah? So he sent me to, asked me, "Can I go and pray for my mother?", he said, "My mother is very sick lah and all that." So I said, "Okay." So I went and I was praying, he said, "My mother cannot understand any English, but anyway, she's in a coma lah, you know, so she won't say anything." Okay, so I went, I laid my hand on his mother, right? I said, "Father, in Jesus' name, Lord, you have blessed her with children, grandchildren, thank you, Lord. Let her going home be at peace and, and Lord." You know, I was praying for God to, you know, graduate her. Suddenly, huh, now this woman is supposed to be in coma, this lady grabbed my hand, huh? Like a piece of iron, you know, like metal clasped my hand, and then she told me, huh, she got up, huh, she said, "Woi, saya mah hidup lo." I tell you, I really panic, I cannot go anywhere. Ketar-ketar sudah. Then I went back, you know, I didn't know what to make out of it lah. I mean, his, his mother came out of coma, lived for a couple more months, and then she went home to be with a lot, uh, uh, believer. But you know, I, I, today I realize how wrong I was. How wrong I was. Stupid prayer, thank God, God didn't answer a lot of those prayers. You know, sometimes the charismatic manners, we go, we lay hands on people, shara bara 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 bara, actually, you're thinking, "God, the time is up, let her go." But it's so wrong, you know? So what is God's will? For men in sickness, you'll be looking at that a little bit, and then how do we approach this topic about healing? What do we do? There's, I keep it very simple, there's certain things you do not do, do not, and certain things you do, okay? So, so it's, it's very, very simple. And then I'm going to look at two main ways Jesus healed. You know, if you take all the miracles Jesus performed in the, in the Word, if you read the Word, you can classify it in these two categories. One, He either heals supernaturally, we will see what that means, or He heals supranaturally, we'll also see what that means. Every healing miracle Jesus performed falls into one of these two categories, okay? And then I will end by giving you some steps you can take if you have an illness in your body. Don't worry, you, you know, God is on your side. What do we do? How do we pursue divine healing? Yes, you go up for prayer, let the, the preacher pray for you, but more than that, in your personal life, your personal battle day to day, what do you do? How, how do you approach this subject? We're going to look into that. So I'm not going to keep it very, very, uh, complicated, I hope, uh, you know, and we'll let God just, you know, we will thank the Holy Spirit and to bury those truths in our heart. Now, we must understand God's will generally for men. You see, when God first made man, He made, as we know from the Word of God, everything good, everything perfect. So many a bike, bike, if you look at the scriptures, if you look at, uh, Genesis, chapter one, verse thirty-one, it says here, it says, "God saw everything that He had made, everything that He had made, and behold, it was very good." The word "good" is good in the widest possible sense. Good, and there was evening, there was morning, the sixth day. Now jump, jump to the verse twenty-eight of Genesis one, you, you see what it says. "God blessed them, and God said to them, 'Be fruitful,'" meaning go and increase, go and multiply, grow and multiply, that is become great, become many, increase greatly, "fill the earth, subdue it, and have dominion over the fish of the sea, and over the birds of the heavens, and over every living thing that moves on the earth." This is God's original plan for creation, for men, for women, for all creation. God intended everything to be good. You know, but then you know what happened, right? You know how this Satan came in, deceived the entire human race, deceived Adam, they ate what they shouldn't eat, and then they try and run and hide, and then they try to blame each other. If you really look at, at how scripture says, when God asked Adam, right? God asked, classic, it happens today. God asked Adam, "What did you do?" Adam said, "Hey, the woman you put here, she gave me, and then I ate." See, he's blaming God, eh? If not for the woman you put, nothing would have happened. And then God turns to the woman and says, "What is this you have done?" And then she said, "The serpent, he told me, and then I ate." No one taking accountability, each one blaming the others, same thing in families today. Your husband, he said, "Ask my wife." You ask the wife, "Hey, not me, you know, the dog there outside, no." Same thing. Only the animal has changed. Ah, there's something about human being, the fallen human being, that does not want to take accountability, that's the root of a lot of problems. And sometimes today, modern counseling, ayoh, modern counseling is all about, "Oh, who did this to you? What did you do? You know, when you're in your mother's womb, this happened, how, how on earth's a person supposed to know what happened to him or her in his mother's womb?" So modern counseling, certain modern counseling, they, they beat all around the bush, but they never get to the heart of the issue, which is accountability. There comes a point of time when you stand up, you man up and says, "Yes, I did it, I am responsible." Until you say that, forget about walking in freedom, running with joy and all that, you are still bound. You follow? You, we must take accountability. Now, let's see, so sin entered the world, okay? And all kinds of illness, disease, all that kind of things, but what, what is God's will? Does God want us to suffer for the sin of Adam? Does God want entire mankind to be cursed with pain, suffering, illness, disease, cancers of every kind? What is God's will in, in, in sickness? Now look at scriptures. In Psalm forty-one, verse three, this is talking about the righteous man, the man who gives to the poor, a man who helps the poor. The Word of God says, "The Lord sustains him," that means preserves him, that means keeps him, sustains him on his sick bed. In his illness, you, what? Restore him to full health. So when a believer is sick, when the righteous person is sick, you can stand on his promise. You can stand on his words. This is not positive confession, huh? This is biblical confession. In Psalm hundred and two, verses two and five, haha, look here, these are, these are your benefits. If you are believer of Jesus, these are your benefits. Bless the Lord, oh my soul, forget not all His benefits. What are His benefits? Forgives all your iniquity, meaning sin, who heals all your diseases. Guess what? That's a benefit. That, that's a benefit that you enjoy, that accrues to you, that is your right if you are a believer of Jesus Christ, amen? Who forgives all your iniquity, who redeems your life from the pit, who crowns you with steadfast love and mercy, who satisfies you with good, so that your youth is renewed like the eagles. I love that. Youth is renewed like an eagle. Not that eventually we'll walk like a turkey. You can take your multivitamins and all that, it's a good thing, you can take all your supplements and all that, praise the Lord, but don't forget to take a dose of scripture. Yeah? Three times a day, five times a day, why? Because then your youth can be renewed like that of an eagle. You know, come to think of it, huh? I've seen pigeons die, I've seen sparrows die, I've seen miners die, but I've never seen an eagle that is dead, have you? Come to think of it, right? I mean, if you think of it, have you ever seen an eagle that, you know? No, I've seen pigeons, they walk, no, jato, mati. Sparrows, miners, but never an eagle. So there, there's something here in scripture. Why? Because God renews that strength, and our strength like that of an eagle. Now, what is our approach? What, what, what do we do if, if you are sick, okay? If you are sick and you, you, you're sick, and you know, sometimes we are born with a condition, not our fault, it's not because of sin, things happen. We live in a fallen world, there are many reasons for, for why illness comes, but I'm not going to go into that, but you know, we live in a fallen world, enough said. What's our response? Again, I said, there are things that we ought not to do, and things we ought to do, things we ought not to do. Let me just start by saying, telling you what you should not do, because to me, that's a lot more important. What we should not do, because a lot of times we, we, we don't understand, you, 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 you know, we, we do things that, really strictly speaking, we should not be doing. So what are they? Let me quickly tell you. One, don't spiritualize your illness. I'll explain what that means. Don't spiritualize your illness. Second, don't regard your illness as a cross to carry, it is not. Do not regard. Number three, modern medication, you'd be surprised. Okay, please, I don't work for Pfizer or any other company, huh? Let me just say, I don't work for that, but I believe in evidence-proven medication. I'm not ashamed to say that. It doesn't affect my faith, in fact, it strengthens my faith, and I'll show you why and how in a moment. Fourth, please do not entertain unbelief. A lot of times, we, we unwittingly get ourselves involved with unbelief. Just try to shut myself up. Why coming here? Oh, suddenly, you know, one whole day, I'm enjoying myself, resting in the Lord, no problem. When I want to go, seven o'clock, I'm, di-di-di-di-di-di, WhatsApp, all kinds of, ah, silly messages coming. You're trying to ruin the peace that I have. That's how unbelief comes today. Unbelievers don't know, I mean, sorry, a lot of believers don't know that that's one principal way that unbelief can come, through WhatsApp or Telegram or social media. I'm serious. So these are four things that, please, we, we will, we'll see what we can do and what we, we should not do. Don't entertain unbelief, I will break it down for you later, what is unbelief? What is unbelief? Okay, now let's look at the first one, do not spiritualize your illness. What do I mean? Okay? Now, when I say spiritualize your illness, a lot of people, when they are sakit or something happen, they say, "Oh, you know, why is God doing this to me? God may be doing something to show me something." But most people, when they cannot sakit, they will say what? "No, pastor, Satan attacking me." Serious. Satan attacking me. You know? Now, haha, I want to tell you, there's a major problem here. If you say Satan is attacking you, you're actually spiritualizing your problem. And, uh, there, there, there are problems attached to this belief, the three, four problem. What's the three, four problem? One is, when you say Satan is attacking you, is giving you the disease, there is no motivation for you to personally deal with issues. Issues such as anger, lust, unforgiveness, bitterness, hatred. All these can cause illnesses. Arthritis, migraines, ulcers, gastro-abdominal, gastrointestinal issues, all these things have a cause sometimes, which is an attitude or a mental condition, a mental reason, psychological reason. And if you say Satan is attacking you, Satan gave you a desire, there will be no motivation for you to deal with your issues. You hate a person so much until, you know, when you look at him, huh, oh, your face go blue. Biru sudah muka. And then you thought, "Pastor, Satan doing it to my face. What should I do? Maybe put more blusher." There's no motivation for you, why should you deal with it? It's not your problem, what? Satan give you the problem. If God want, He can heal me, loh. Do you understand? When you spiritualize your illness, the second reason why this belief is so wrong is because He empowers Satan. Satan may be sitting there minding his own business, he say, "Pastor, is tamai Satan?" "Ah, yes." Jump kita pergi. You strengthen, you strengthen his whole if you spiritualize your problem. I had a friend, few weeks ago, he called me, "Pastor, yo, ayo, chirela, kenala, stomach ilah, I want to meet you, only, all this lah, I think Satan attack lah." So I said, "Bro, where were you last night?" I went lah, the usual, the mama place there. "What time?" "About twelve, twelve thirty lah, pastor." "What happened?" "Oh, yo, pastor, I so hungry, huh? I work three roti chanae plus the dal plus sambal, you know?" I said, "What do you expect lah? Twelve forty-five at night, you go and work three roti chanae? In the morning, of course you have problems, there's abdominal warfare, no spiritual warfare. Your roti chanae inside fighting." Am I right? Yeah? So don't call Satan, don't empower Satan. Even if it's a, a satanic attack, turn your focus upon Jesus, we'll see that later. Don't empower Satan by saying, "Oh, it's a satanic attack." You know, which demon, huh? Is there a demon behind the poker? Demon behind the, wait, 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 what, what demon is that? Please don't do that. You're empowering Satan. And the third reason, you see that a lot in churches, when people come and tell you, "Oh, this is a demonic attack." This actually, they are operating out of a self-righteous spirit. It, they are promoting their own pride, you know, because what they're telling you, "I am so spiritual, huh? That even Satan can kacau me." See the pastor, there's satu sabar sudah pusing, nothing happened to him. But I, because I pray so hard, huh? I pray, I pray, I pray, huh? Satan can kacau me. It's pride, you know? Pride. It's self-righteousness. You're saying, "Because I am so righteous, Satan must come and attack me." You know, how many people have told me, "Oh, this is the thorn," you know, like Saint Paul got a thorn? I also got a thorn. Excuse me, huh? Saint Paul wrote about one third of the New Testament. He preached his lungs out, huh? There's a reason why he got a thorn. Unless you write scripture, which you can't and will never be doing, you have no right to say you got a thorn. Am I correct enough? This is, this is pride. That's another reason why people don't stop to think. When they say Satan is always attracted to them, what's another name for Satan? Demon? Not Mr. Essetan, huh? You might be right, but it's not Mr. Essetan. It's Balseboop. What does Balseboop mean? It's a lord of the flies, king of the flies. What are flies attracted to? Sorry? Yeah, manure, dung, filth, rubbish, junk, dead things that sting to high heaven, flies are there. And who is Satan? The king of the flies. That means all these flies who likes all this dung, this dirt and all, they'll go into Satan and say, "Aku, aku, aku." That's Balseboop. And so if you tell me that Satan likes you so much, I'll say that there's dung, there's filth, there's dirt in your life. So much so, that the prince of flies, the lord of flies, come and hang up sementara, atas kepala kau. Logic? You understand? So please, don't spiritualize your illness. Yes, occasionally, things can happen, you, you know, I mean, uh, there may be a satanic cause thing, suddenly, you want to go and preach, and then, you know, things get up, you know? But if you persevere, if, if it's, uh, illness caused by a satanic thing, temporary thing, the, the cure is very fast, you just begin to spray in the spirit, bang in the spirit, do the things, get into the work, it's gone. Okay? It is gone. So please, first thing you do, don't spiritualize your illness. Too many people are doing that, they're not walking free. Why? Because they want it so much, it's, it's a badge they wear with pride. Second thing that you, you do is, uh, sorry. Please don't regard your illness as a cross to bury, uh, to carry. Okay? Uh, now, to be clear, Jesus told His disciples many times to carry their cross, many times, okay? I, I give you three, three, uh, times in scripture where He said to carry the cross. In Luke nine twenty-three, He said to them, "If anyone would come after Me, let him deny himself, take up his cross and follow Me." In Mark eight thirty-four, calling the crowd from His disciples, He said to them, "If anyone would come after Me, let him deny himself, take up his cross and follow Me." Matthew ten thirty-eight, "Whoever does not take up his cross and follow Me is not worthy of Me." But what is this cross, taking up the cross? Well, taking up this cross simply refers to the cost of discipleship. It's the cost that sometimes you have to pay when you become a believer of Jesus. It means to deny yourself. That's a cross you have to carry, there's a price that you may recall to pay because of your faith in Jesus Christ. A disciple of Jesus, you must be prepared to do these things. You must be prepared to lose your closest friends. Must be prepared to lose your family, your job, your calling, your profession, your reputation, even your life. If you're a disciple of Jesus, you know, we in Malaysia, we, we don't understand this very much, because, praise the Lord, we live in still a peaceful country. Okay? You got a few weirdos here and there, but generally, we are in a peaceful country, okay? Peaceful country, we can still practice our faith. So we, we don't understand. Okay, peaceful country, we can still practice our faith. So we, we don't understand what is this cost, some of us, the cost that, that, that a disciple is called to bear. But if you go to KLIA and you take a one and a half hour flight out of this country, out of Malaysia, you will learn in, at least, you can learn in at least five different countries where people die because of their belief in Jesus Christ. Five countries in Southeast Asia. About ten years ago, I remember there was a tremendous persecution in Indonesia. My friends send me videos of, of Christian preachers. I, I, I see, I've seen it. The, the extremists are ripping their mouths open with their bare hands, killing them on the spot. Because they dared preach about Jesus. I met people who have been killed. Relatives of people who have been killed because of their belief in Jesus. I've been to Vietnam. And there, people ask me, it's a, it's a badge of honor, how many times have you been to prison? Because in the congregation, the students of Bible school, this one sister has been in prison five times, five years, another eighteen years, another twenty-two years, other, you, you know, thirteen years, fifteen years, all of them have stories, they've been persecuted by the communist government. Because of their belief in Jesus Christ. And they asked me, how many times you've been in prison? You know, thankfully, that time was in prison ministry. So I can look at them and say, wow, every week I go into prison. Wow, you see, you can see that, every week you go and, yeah. Then you go, they come, yeah, you go, they let me out. And then next week you go, yeah, next week. I didn't have the heart to tell them I'm going as prison ministry volunteer. You know, but, but people pay a price, you understand? People pay a price for their belief. That's the cost of discipleship. We don't understand it because we are insulated. It's, it's, it's a good country to be in. You know, so Jesus came to heal us from disease. He didn't come to crucify us with illness, you understand? So the cross to carry, cross of discipleship. In fact, it is, it's hypocrite, it's a bit hypocritical. If you say your cross, uh, your, your illness, a cross to carry, then don't come for divine healing. Don't go to preacher, pastor, can you pray for me? My back very painful. What? Yeah, your cross to carry, you carry your cross lah and run. Understand? Illness is never a cross to carry. You must get that right. Third thing is, don't disregard modern medication. Now, again, I'm not working for any pharmaceutical, uh, okay? But I want to show you that modern Bible is not against modern medication. You, you know, it's not against, uh, modern medication. Why? Because it is validated by science. That's, that's, I mean, you, you'd be surprised. Just to come out with a small penidol letter, you know, it takes years of research, years of data before they push out the penidol. You know? So modern medication is evidence-based, please understand. Yes, it may give you allergies, yes, there may be side effects, but it's important because it preserves your life while you're waiting for the divine healing to manifest in your life. If that illness kills you, because you don't take medicine, then forget about divine healing, you need power of resurrection. It to line cerita. When you are dead, believe me, you cannot pray. So, don't disregard or discount modern medication. Now, consider the following verses ah. Look at Jeremiah chapter eight, verse twenty-two. This is God talking, you know. He says, because the people are sick and torn apart, there are no shepherds. And then he's asking this question, he says, surely, there is some medicine in Gilead, surely, there's a doctor or physician in Gilead. So why are the wounds on my people not healed? In other words, he's saying, what, what's wrong? Where are your doctors? Where are your physicians? Why are the people here so ill? Why are they so sick? God is asking the question. In Proverbs seventeen, verse twenty-two, sorry, Proverbs seventeen, verse twenty-two, it says, happiness is good medicine, sorrow is a disease. You see that? So, the Bible does not forbid us from taking medicine, okay? Now, in, in fact, a lot of modern medication is based on, on naturally occurring things. It's based on plants, it's based on, on stuff, uh, and if it's in nature, if it's natural, then, you know, in a sense, it is God created. Now, I have that, the photo of this bacteria or this mold, it's a mold, called, uh, Penicillium, uh, Notatum, that's right. Penicillium Notatum, it's, it's a form of bacteria. From this, they grow in a lab and they get penicillin, which is a very good antibiotic. Today you got a flu and all that, you run to doctors, they give you a antibiotic. A lot of those antibiotics are from this family, Penicillin. Now, this mold is a naturally occurring mold. If you have stale bread, sometimes you see this greenish thing ah. But please don't go and take it and say, hey, pastor Andrew say medicine, no ah. Don't eat it, throw away the bread. But, you know, it's grown in a lab, it's properly, uh, done and all that, then they reduce it into medicine which we take and it has powerful antibacterial properties. And because it is a naturally occurring thing, you can say it is God-created thing. It's just that science has come in and, you know, has amplified, that the healing process has amplified the effect. So the Bible is not against, uh, modern medication. Please be careful of false news, fake news, misleading news, disinformation, misinformation that comes. Everything is poison. I mean, we've all come through COVID. I don't even want to go there, you understand what I'm saying? Oh, this one will give you, will kill you lah. This one will cause your, your, this thing to swell, your ears, you have a third ear, you know. All your hair will drop off. Your eyes will go sengat, don't take. A lot of it is just, you know, nonsense. So be careful, be careful of in, uh, information and a lot of this disinformation. The next thing you do is don't entertain unbelief. Now, what is unbelief? Unbelief are those things, uh, that you, that you see, that you hear, that you think about, that just stop or quench the power of God from manifesting in your life. Sometimes in prayer meetings, you, you hear, we are praying for someone, oh, Lord, let's pray for Auntie Lim, Auntie Lim is suffering from cancer. Oh, shaba ba 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 ba, yes, we bind every spirit of cancer. Hallelujah, thank you, Lord, she's healed, thank you, Lord, she's healed, thank you, Lord, she's healed. Wow, very good, forty-five minutes. Then come out the prayer meeting. Kena want te tarir, mama stall, the conversation goes like, hey, how Auntie Lim, oh, you're very bad lah. Doctors say, no choice really, anytime now, sila. I mean, forty-five minutes you spend praying, banging on heaven's door, bringing down heavens, causing thunder, lightning to come. One moment, want te tarir, oh, straight from belief to unbelief. You see? So those are things that we hear, we think about, we entertain, they quench the, the work of God from manifesting. In Mark chapter five, look at that, huh? It says, this is Jesus. He was doing, he couldn't do his, uh, works, his miracles in Nazareth. Why? Because of unbelief. Look at what it says in verse five and part of verse six. He could not do mighty works there, except that he laid his hands on a few sick people and healed them. And he marvelled because of their unbelief. And then the next part of verse six is in there. It says, how did Jesus deal with unbelief? He went about among the villagers' teaching. You see, teaching helps people overcome unbelief. Honestly. Jesus himself, this is a model he showed. He was full of unbelief, he didn't waste his time, but he went around the whole area, talking, teaching, teaching people. Especially today, the teaching ministry is so very important. Simple things, you don't have to think, think about lofty things, you know? Simple things about what is faith, how to manifest faith, how to build faith. These are things people need today. And the one way you can overcome unbelief is by teaching. So those are four things you do. So what do you do when you battle an illness? So what, those are things that you don't do. What are things you do? Two things, let me just keep it very simple. One is inquire of the Lord first, at, at the start of any illness or, or your journey, inquire of the Lord first. Second, choose to place your faith in, in, in Jesus Christ. Now, what, what do I mean by inquire of the Lord first? Now, look at, uh, Second Chronicles, huh? Chapter sixteen, verse two. Now, this is, this is about this king, I think, Asa, okay? He fell sick. Let's see what happened. And Asa, in the thirty and ninth year of his reign, was diseased in his feet. Until his disease was exceeding great, yet in his disease, he sought not to the Lord, notice, but to the physicians. And Asa slept with his fathers and died in the one and fortieth year of his reign. So, the, the issue here is not that he went to see the doctors, you understand? The issue here is not that he went to see the physician. The issue here is he did not inquire of the Lord first before he went to see the physicians. You see, in the times of Jesus, in those days, if the person was sick, he goes to the temple and, and, and he sees the priest or the prophet. The priest will tell him, uh, pray for him, take some offerings and, and, or the prophet will speak to him, the will of God, you know? And then, they may tell him, go and see the physician. And then they go and see the physician. But this fellow didn't do that. He went straight to see the physician. He didn't inquire of the Lord. And for that, he paid with his life. He didn't die in a, in a very tragic manner, the, the, the way it says here, died in the one and forty year. That means he went peacefully, but he still died early. You see, now what does inquire of the Lord means? What does sought not the Lord? The word sought means what? To seek with care, it means to consult, it means to inquire, it means to seek, believe it or not, it means to seek God in prayer and worship. That's what it means. To consult the Lord. And so in today's times, when we are sick, we first inquire of the Lord. And how do we do that? Well, we can do the following. One is, you must, you must purpose, you must choose, it's a choice thing. You must choose to first pray and worship. Worship is so powerful. Second, you must please remind yourself of God's healing promises. You see, that's helping you transform your mind. Sometimes, you know, you're full with all this data, all this bad news, this physician says that, that test says this, and all this kind of, of things going to. Renew your mind by meditating on the promises of God. There are so many promises that talk about healing. Third is, you must choose to believe. You see, belief is a choice. You must choose to believe that God wants to heal you, that healing is found in Jesus Christ. The, the last thing is, if you require hospitalization or medication, please inquire of the Lord where to go. You know, I paid a high price for this once, a few years ago. It's working and I had a problem in my wisdom tooth. So I, I prayed, I asked Lord, I said, Lord, where do I go? And then, believe it, don't. God showed me or gave me the name of a hospital, which is a bit far from my place, but I don't want to go there because so expensive. I called up the place, they said to extract the wisdom tooth, of course, about seven hundred to eight hundred ringgit. Yeah, that's the price. But this dentist, I didn't know then, was a very good dentist. One of the best in Kuala Lumpur. So I didn't know, I said, oh, you, seven hundred, eight hundred, nah, very difficult. And then the insurance won't pay, you have to pay first and then claim. So I kedu kut lah. Then, just opposite my house, I saw klinik pergigian, no, three shop lots, the fellow got. So I thought three shop lots means, uh, nice neon sign, must be okay lah. So I went. There's a check with me, even I was setting foot there, God like, no, no, but I said, is, but seven hundred, this fellow only charging about two fifty, no. That's also maximum. So I went there. I said, doctor say, can do or not? Can, can. Oh, don't worry, this one, I've done so many before. The, the man, the, the surgeon also looks old man, so I thought old man, that must have experience lah, you know? I didn't know at that time, this fellow is a deregistered dentist. I didn't know. Then he looked, tang, 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 give me the painkiller, pang, 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 you know, like, like, like demolishing a wall like that, the sound, no, pang, 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 pang. Then suddenly he said, ayoh. He said, ayah. When he said, ayoh, then he left down this little chisel, this hammer. I, I'll be back, I'll be back. Then he went out, I'm waiting and waiting and waiting. The bugger left his clinic, he ran away. After about half an hour, I stuck, you know, they put the contraption, you know, I can't say anything. I'm going out like a madman, asking the nurse, I say, why, why, it's a doctor, oh, I don't know, I don't know, the, the, the nurse is so foreigner, yeah. Oh, and then started swelling, you know, the, the tooth is half gone, I don't know what on earth is going on. So I managed to pull the silly thing out of my mouth. I said, God, forgive me, what did I do? Go to the hospital. So I quickly rushed to hospital, went to emergency, that time my face like watermelon, you know? The, the, went to emergency, the doctor look at me, the fellow, put his hand like that. He said, don't worry. Yeah, you put your hand like that and tell me not to worry, a stupid doctor lah. I mean, you know, so, then, I, I went, I said, I need to see a dentist. Then the doctor said, uh, this is already too bad for dentists. You need to see a maxofacial surgeon. You almost fainted. So they called a surgeon, the surgeon came. Then they wheel me, I did, it's all in a blur, you know, they wheel me to his clinic and all that, put me in this thing, took some X-rays and all that. And then, uh, he gave me a, uh, another painkiller. When he was pain, oh, hell of a pain, I said, oh, doctor, it's hurting, hurting, nothing. So he gave me another, another shot, still hurting. Then he told me, he put his things down, he said, look, I like the doctor's approach. I cannot give you another painkiller. I cannot give you another local anesthetic. If you cannot take the pain, I'll have to put you down, take you to the surgeon, take you to the operating theater and operate on you. So I asked, how much does it cost? He said, at least fifteen thousand. I said, doctor, please carry on. No joke, you know? So after tung tang ting tang tung, inside, another, a very cool guy, huh? He managed to extract the tooth, oh, you, I saw the tooth, those are takut lah. Oh, you know, it's all now like, like real demon like that, now, wisdom tooth. I don't know why they call it wisdom tooth, you know? So extracted it, I ended up paying, close to five thousand ringgit. I didn't want to pay eight hundred, right, at maximum. I thought I'm very smart, although God told me clearly, go and see this dentist. I paid the high price. Then, after that, I went, I claimed from the insurance, insurance, oh, sorry, this is dental, dental you cannot claim. I said, this is emergency, you see, emergency. Yes, it's emergency, but tooth, mouth, emergency, not takira. I can't claim. I rookie almost five thousand ringgit. I learned a bitter lesson. Inquire of the Lord first. Believe it or not, he will show you where to go. Who to see. And then you obey. So very important thing today. Today, there are tons of doctors coming out, you don't know like myself whether be deregistered or not. But anyway, after I got better, I, I know, I was so angry, I sent letters here, there, that's how I found out this fellow is deregistered. Then before I could decide to do anything, the fellow died. You know? So, that's the end of my story, I can't, can't even claim back anything. I thought I threatened him a bit and maybe cover something lah, you know, five thousand ringgit, a lot of money, but cannot lah, fellow, kaput. So, inquire of the Lord first, okay, I showed you how you inquire Lord. The second thing is, choose to place your trust in Jesus, okay? Now, look at First Peter, chapter two, verse twenty-four, it tells you why, because he himself bore sins in his bodies on the tree, cross, that is, that we may die to sin and live to righteousness. By his wounds, you have been healed. Okay? Now practically, having faith in Jesus means these two things. You allow Jesus, you give Jesus freedom to heal you supernaturally, or you, and you give Jesus freedom to heal you supranaturally. Why is supernatural? Supernaturally is where God accept. Supernaturally is where God accelerates the natural process. He amplifies, he multiplies the effect of that which is natural. That's why it's called supernatural. Okay, doctor say you must take medicine for a long time, you just take it for two days. What brings about a healing, you know, quick healing. Medication you take may heal you quickly. But you're doing that which is natural. And he amplifies, he accelerates the healing process. Supernatural is, well, God uses doctor, but he is not bound by the doctor's advice, okay? He is not bound by modern medication, he is not bound by science. He can work outside science. That means he can go far above and beyond the boundaries of what is natural. Both Pastor Carlo and I were in the school of X. And you see, my life is totally different from where I intended it to be. You know, I studied law, I worked for a lawyer back in Penang. Some of us up north, you might know Mr. Lim Kensiu, the late Lim Kensiu, was a legend of his time. I was his clerk, and he encouraged me to study law. And I studied law, and I passed my law exams. And then I was wondering where to do, what to do? To go to KL, to take the bar, or not? Then, I wrote an article for a law journal. Okay, and they called me for interview. Long story short, they offered me a position in the law journal. I became its editor after some time. It's a very big honour. I became the editor of the Malaysian Law Journal, MLJ. You know, and from there, it was amazing. God opened all kinds of door, I really loved what I was doing. And I wanted to pursue the academic area of law. So I applied to do my masters in University of Malaya. I knew the dean, the dean was a very good friend of mine. But during that time, God already began to speak to me about ministry. I didn't want to, you know, I would go pray for people, all this kind of thing, but God spoke, was speaking to me about ministry. I couldn't, couldn't understand. So I decided to go to the school of X. Wrong choice. Went to the school of X for eight months. I put on hold my plans to do the masters. First, I told the dean, "When I come out of this Bible school, I will come in." And went for a mission trip to Thailand. It really blew my mind. See, cut a long story short, on the, on the, one night, we had a rally. It rained like cats and dogs, really heavy, hailstones. I never experienced hailstones ever before in my life. I experienced it there in Surin, in Thailand. And I'm not the MacGyver kind of person, you know, I'm quite a boring person, you know? But that night, I decided to take a very special Chang'e James Bond kind of torchlight. You put it here five miles out, you can see, so bright. I put it in my pocket and went. Another friend of mine, he brought a burger umbrella. I don't know why, you just, God prompted us to take those things to the rally. Went to the rally, heavy rain, you know, cannot, everything short-circuit, no light, no, I mean, it's really pitch darkness, blackness, you cannot see anything, you know? And so, people had already come to the rally grounds in the field, you know? They came in their four-wheel drives, they took their, what do you call that? Station wagons, their trucks, you know, today, here we have buses, there they have trucks, in Surin, all trucks, big trucks, they use as buses. And so, all people were there full, the padang is full of these cars. And so, the principal, Raymond Mu, he said, "Look, the people are already here. We can't use the sound system, it's raining. Does anyone have an umbrella?" Oh, my friend brought up the umbrella. And then he said, "By chance, does anyone have a torchlight?" I was the only one out of thirty students got torchlight. He said, "Come, you both, follow me." So I followed lah, one on the left, my friend on the right, like that. We went down to the padang. So we went to the first car, the first car. This little girl, about eight years old. Problem is, from the time she was born, the bottom part of her feet, it's a condition stuck to the thighs, you know, it's inside like that. So, she cannot walk, she waddles on her knees, you know, like a duck like that, with her feet like flippers like that. For all her life, for nine years, she was like that, cannot go to school. And so, she was seated one kind on the seat, you know? So Pastor Raymond, "I'm shining a torchlight." I felt the first, you see, you know? He started praying, "Father, in Jesus' name, bring..." When he said, "Jesus' name," I tell you, her feet, you know? I can describe it only like this, if you've seen the aeroplane landing gear, how it comes up, you know, comes up like that. The legs started descending like that, started forming, the lower part started forming, started coming out from her thighs, man. First one leg, then the next leg, and then she stood up like that, can't, can't, cannot walk. So, they encourage her to walk, "Come, come, walk inside, you know, walk inside the ravine." And she began to walk, and sooner or later, she was healed. I saw it all under the torchlight. Then we went to the second one. The second one, I shined the light on this old lady. I don't need anyone to tell me, because she looked, her face like that. No eyes, you know, just a slight narrow indentation here, slight narrow hole, no eyes at all. She was born like that, from birth like that. And this is what that really blew my mind. As we began to pray, I saw like bull's eye, things forming in a, in that small little thing, you know? I'm shining a torchlight, I can see it all. Going, whirling, 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 both eyes, the blacks, I can see the black, I can see the white, whirling, 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 and pang! She started screaming at me because I'm shining the lights into her eyes. She couldn't see, I was thinking, "Yeah, right, you shouting at me, hey, from the time you were born like that, now at least you can see." But she got two eyes, can you imagine? Two eyes! Then the third, when I went to the third thing, they brought this guy dying already, ayoh. The smell of death is unmistakable. You smell person who is dying, you know what I mean? It's horrible, this fellow, dying like that. So as you begin to pray, this guy jumped out, right? He jumped out and grabbed hold of my neck. It's totally healed. I mean, there were many more miracles I did now, but these three stick in my mind. I remember that night, I went back to my room, I gone down my knees, I said, "God, this is what I want to do for the rest of my life." Wrong prayer, but I prayed then. Cut a long story short, I came back from Thailand, went back to work. I decided to call up the dean, I said, "Okay, let me put my application in, put it officially." She called me, she said, "Andrew, I'm going to hospital for a quick checkup. When I get back next week, you come and see me, we'll work it out." Okay? "No problem," she said, "I can even maybe get you funding. You can even work here as a lecturer or teacher in University of Malaya, as a tutor while you're pursuing your postgraduate." Oh, very excited. She went into hospital on Wednesday. She died on Saturday. That was the end of my master's program. Because my good friend, the dean of the faculty of law, just died like that. So, after that, I didn't know what to do. I was thinking whether to get into practice. A lot of my friends were, good friends were judges, and they told me, "Andrew is so corrupted with you in the church and all that now, forget it lah, just continue there, grow your academic this thing, and you know, begin to minister to God." And I say, "You're more effective that way." My good friends are telling me this. And so, I was there until God took me out of that place, you know, many years ago, and I've been in full time since. But the point I'm trying to get at is, I personally have seen God heal supernaturally. I'm sure Pastor Carlo himself has got his experiences. God moves supernaturally. Don't play, play. He's not bound by nature. But when you come to God for healing, okay? When you come to God for healing, you don't decide whether he should heal you supernaturally, or you don't decide whether he should heal you supernaturally. You come to God because he is sovereign, you trust him to heal you full stop. Okay? Why? Because supernatural healing also uses signs of the day. And so, taking your medication while you're allowing God to heal you is not abnormal. You see, you look at the times of Jesus, and Jesus used a lot of spit and mud to heal. Okay, today, there are tons of reasons why he used spit and mud. But let me tell you, during the times of Jesus, spit and mud were considered medicine or signs of the day. Today, some people still use the mud mask at night. You know what I mean? They use a face mask. This time, I had a maid who used to put face masks, gave me, always gave me a fright of my life. Suddenly, come on, bah, wah, you know, it's so, so late. Bine and kasi in Jesus. But Jesus used mud and saliva. Today, scientists tell you, your saliva, I mean, your mouth is one of the dirtiest places, you know, I mean, honestly. But you're not infected, why? Because of your saliva. Your saliva has a protein, antibacterial property, it's called histatein. See, Jesus knew, and he used the signs of those day to heal. That's why he used mud, that's why he used spit. So supernatural healing uses signs, so they don't run away from signs, his processes and all these things. Don't listen to fake news. God is not bound by science, but he can use science. You follow what I'm saying? Yeah? So God also healed, you find that Jesus also heals supernaturally. When he raised the dead, okay, when he put eyes into people, that's supernatural healing. Okay? So, beyond what is natural, Jesus can heal. You just come to God and you trust him, you just trust him to heal. Now, to sum it up, when you are dealing with an illness, I'm going to close here. Don't do the following, don't spiritualize your illness, especially claim there's a spiritual attack. Don't regard your illness as a cross to carry. And yes, where, you know, I know Ed Noz, I know Pastor Carlo, I know he's hard for teaching, equipping people, and I think you all are pretty well-equipped. If you stay the cause in your consistent, it shouldn't be any problem with this kind of beliefs. Don't regard your illness as a cross to carry. Don't disregard modern medication. Don't please throw away your medication and all that. Do not entertain unbeliefs. So what do you do? Inquire from God. I mean, I share with you how you can inquire from the Lord. Choose to place your faith in Jesus Christ, because this is a choice. It always shocks me how people have more faith in the, what do you call it, in the alternative medicine healer than in Jesus Christ. You know, I used to pastor a church in Kajang for a little while, Catholic pastor for one year. Then next to us, there was this young guy. He has a clinic, he's a TCM practitioner, okay? Now, this fellow is very unique, okay? He doesn't give you herbs and all that. He has, you know, when you go and see the optician, right? He has his machine, you put your chin there, and then they go in and you can see what's in your eye, right? I mean, you know, if you've gone to see an optician. Now, this fellow had a machine like that. It's just that, now, you pay him twenty-five ringgit now, you put your chin there, he looks into your eye, he can tell you what's wrong with your kidney, what's wrong with your abdomen, what's wrong, everything else. Some more, he can tell you, "Oh, you know, last time you got problem with your father, then you got problem with your mother, isn't it? And somebody is doing this." How does he know, looking into your eye, the silly machine? So, the problem is, a lot of our church members started going there. So I had to put a stop to this lah, you know? And then, so one day, we got talking to him. I said, "Tell me lah, tell me how." I said, "How, when the fellow put the head there, you can see all these things? How can you see the connection? There's no nerve from your eye to your kidney, to your abdomen, to your leg, wherever it is. Definitely no nerve attaching to your background, you know, your personal facts." He said, "Now, I tell you the truth, I so don't know." I said, "What do you mean, you don't know?" He said, "When they put their chin in the machine, and I press the thing, suddenly, a voice comes and tells me." So I say, "What, the machine can talk?" "No, no, the machine, my left ear voice tell me." So I asked him, "How long have you had this?" He said, "Since I was a child." That's the occultic. That's occultic. So I told the people, I'm just, "Do you want to go and see him? And this is what he's saying, he's operating on a different spirit." People don't see that. So you must be careful, you know? I'm not against taking herbs and all that and good food, but you know, you need to be careful. So, how do you inquire the Lord? And then, you choose to place your trust in Jesus. I shared with you what it means to place your trust in Jesus, avoid all these kind of questionable things, and then you can expect your miracle. Amen. Okay? Choose to believe that Jesus can heal. It's an easy thing. It's an easy thing, it's not a difficult thing, really. My, I mean, you know, this is something that we need to excel in, all of us, because we have the power, we have the authority to command healing, to come, there are people who need it, who need it. You know, and if we are struggling with an illness, hereditary illness, genetic illness, whatever it is, these are some things that we can do to help speed up our recovery. Amen? Let's pray. Thank you, Lord. I will end with prayer, and then, up to Pastor, if you want one worship song or something. But then, after that, anyone who needs prayer, please feel free. I will of course pray for you. Amen? Thank you, Jesus. Father, we come before you. We thank you for your word. Your word is living, your word is active, sharper than a double-edged sword. The Father, that even tonight, as we have heard your word for healing, we thank you, Jesus. You are the God of healing. You are Jehovah Rapha. You are Christ, our healer. We are healed because of our work on the cross. We are healed by your stripes. We are made whole by your wounds, Jesus. And Father, we come to you tonight. Those of us who have conditions in our bodies, illnesses or diseases that we carry, God, we come to you. And we say, "Thank you, Lord, for what you have done for us." That walking in healing, walking in wholeness is our benefit as your children. It is the children's bread, Jesus. Children's bread, Father. Hito raxan da rabas sidai, Jesus. Hikoro no masala ekira naranda masana, Jesus. Jesus! We declare that you are our healer. We thank you for healing that springs forth in our bodies, even as we go back home and do what is natural. We thank you for healing us. For your hand is not short, that it cannot save, that it cannot heal, God. And Father, tonight, as your minister, God, Father, I say, "Stretch out your hand with healing." I proclaim healing, I proclaim wholeness. I proclaim divine health to my brothers and sisters, your Father. I say that they shall live, they shall not die. I say that healing shall spring forth speedily, Jesus. Hira shanai. Thank you, Jesus. Kurana shanai, Jesus. Father, we thank you for wholeness. Jesus! Holy Spirit, lead us into his paths of healing, his paths of wholeness. Lead us away from every abomination. Kuraha saranae, pira su. Thank you, Jesus. Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. If you need prayer, you can come, come up here, let the Holy Spirit minister to us, right? Believe, right? That's the message today, believe, all right? Don't doubt, don't entertain your doubt, all right? Yeah. So if you need prayer, just come up here and, you know, receive your, the answer for your prayer, receive your healing. Receive a touch, maybe physical healing, spiritual healing, emotional healing, all right? So he is here, thank you, Jesus. Rabashanda. Yeah, just come up here, we don't have to, you know, sometimes we don't even need music or song. The Lord is here already, all right? Believe for your healing, all right? The Bible says, "You shall not die, but live and declare the works of the Lord." We have read that scripture that it is by his stripe that you have been healed. Hallelujah. Shadabaka, rabaka shanda labaka. Sabar yana namaha. Shara baka rabaka. Shiri ala labaka. Rababa shandala baka. Shababaka namaha. Rabaka shandala baka. Hallelujah. Rababa shandala baka. Shababaka. Hallelujah. Shira baba yannu. Ora baba shandala baka. Jesus, beautiful Savior. Godful Majesty, risen King. Lamb of God, holy and righteous. Blessed Redeemer, bright morning sun. All the heavens shout your praise. All creations bow to worship you. Name above every name. How wonderful, how beautiful. Jesus, your name. Name above every name, Jesus. Godful Majesty, risen King. Thank you, Lord, hallelujah. Lamb of God, holy and righteous. Blessed Redeemer, bright morning sun. All the heavens shout your praise. All creations bow to worship you. How wonderful, how beautiful. Name above every name. How wonderful, how beautiful. Jesus, your name. Name above every name. Every name exalted on. How wonderful, how beautiful. Jesus, your name. Name above every name. Ebra baya shandai. Ora baba raya shandale. Ebra baba ryan da la bor ya se. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord. We thank you for your healing. We thank you for your power. Ora baba shandala baka. Hey, ramande le baya shande. My Lord. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Jesus, we worship you. Jesus, we worship you. Oh, Lord. Ora baba yande. Shera baba ryan da. Ora baba rya. Shiri ala la bor yanda. Ela la barya. Yeah. How wonderful, how beautiful. Name above all name. Exalted on. How wonderful. You're so beautiful, Jesus. Your name. Name above every name. How wonderful, how beautiful. Name above every name, Jesus. Ora baba shandala bor yanda labaka namaha. Glory. We praise you, Lord, for your touch. We praise you, Lord, for your healing. We praise you for your glory. We praise you, Jesus. We receive your healing, we receive your touch, we receive your blessing, we receive your miracle. Jesus, thank you, Lord. Lord of lords, king of kings, redeemer and healer. Thank you, Lord. Re baka yante le boshanai. Hallelujah. How wonderful, how beautiful. Name above every... Come, let's all stand, let's worship the Lord for a while as we close. Hallelujah, say, "How wonderful, how wonder..." You're so beautiful, Jesus, thank you for your word, thank you for your promises. Jesus, every name. Exalt him, we exalt you, Lord. How wonderful, hey, you're beautiful. Hey, Jesus, your name. Name above every name, Jesus. Jesus, your name. Name above every name, Jesus. Hallelujah. Come on, let's give the Lord a club offering of praise. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Are you blessed tonight? Right, it's a great teaching, I love that. I love the teaching, very good. It really encourages us and that is what God wants for us, actually. That is his will for us, amen, all right? So we praise God for Pastor Simon, for bringing us that encouragement and teaching. Maybe it's not new to some of us, but again, I feel the anointing here, I feel the anointing during the preaching, right? God is here, the Lord is here, amen, amen. So tomorrow, we have another session for our Sunday service. If you are free, you can be here, you can remind others and especially those who have needs, you know, let them be ministered to, all right? Praise God. We want to close in prayer, let us all lift our hands to Jesus as we close. Thank you, Lord, for your word, thank you so much for what you have done. Lord, we are in the midst of going through the Passion Week. And Lord, the Good Friday is coming and the Resurrection Sunday. Lord, what a timely message tonight, that because of the cross, Lord, you bore our sins and sicknesses, our sorrows on the cross. And you said in your word that by your stripes, we are healed. Thank you so much, Lord, we bless you. We thank you for Jesus, who died for us, who was crucified for us, who was buried and ascended on the third day. Rised again from the dead and ascended to heaven. We thank you for our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ. We love Jesus, we love the Lord, we bless you, Lord, thank you. Lord, pray that you bless us as we go home, keep us safe. And Lord, as we come back for tomorrow's service, be with us and speak to us again through your word. We thank you, we give glory and praise to your name in Jesus' precious name we pray, amen, amen, amen. Thank you for being here, thank you for your time, go with the blessings of the Lord and God bless you, amen.